Okay, I think we're good to go. Hello, everyone. This is Davy McNally. I'm the Chair of the Athens City Commission on Disabilities. And we are joining you again live from all of our homes and libraries tonight. Uh, thank you all so very much for joining us and we have a very full agenda tonight. Um, just as a reminder, for accessibility reasons, uh, please keep your uh, volume or your uh, uh, your microphone muted until you're ready to talk. Uh, also, whenever you unmute yourself, please uh, state your name so that we have a chance for uh, interpreter to kind of catch up and to identify who's speaking. Um, and we will be ready to go. So, so thank you very much for, for joining tonight. And I'd like to go ahead and call the meeting to order at uh, five, I think it was 5:36. Um, so Noah was not able to join us tonight, but Carolyn offered to help us to establish quorum.
We have thirteen members, uh, three are absent. That's uh, Claire, Samora, and Diane. So we have a quorum.
And Claire, Claire just joined us, I saw a few minutes ago. So
Right, okay.
We just have two members absent. Thank you. Uh, and then if you'd like to also uh, read our mission statement for our commission.
The Athens City Commission on Disabilities is a committee of city government whose commitment is to provide a means for the concerns of people with disabilities to be heard, to advocate for public policy change, to provide expertise to the community on disabilities, and tell the community about the strengths and limitations of people with disabilities, as well as how the community can help them improve their quality of life, thereby ensuring equality of opportunity and full participation in community life for everyone.
Excellent. Thanks so much. It's always a good reminder about what we're, what we're doing. Um, let's go ahead and move down to the approval of minutes for August. Uh, we sent that out with the packet, with Patty. Uh, if everyone wants to take just a, a minute as we're reading through, uh, first of all, are there any um, suggestions for improvement to those minutes or um, anything that we missed uh, in those minutes?
I would move them with any corrections.
Uh, do I hear, did you uh, move that we go ahead and approve those minutes?
Any corrections here?
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second, it's Arian.
Okay. Any, any discussion about the minutes? All right, uh, all in favor of approving the minutes, please uh, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Was that uh, Arian who seconded or Berry?
Arian.
It was a tie.
Yeah, I believe it was both of us.
Um, and then if we want to go ahead and move on to the treasurer's report?
Oh, yes. I sent the treasurer's report out. The only um, difference I just want to point out is that out of the uh, $1,000 allocated from the city, we would probably only spend $120 or $150 for the virtual Athena ceremony. So there will be about $850 that we'll be able to return to the city because they're uh, cutting back, of course, as you know, everyone is on budgets. Also, out of the um, 880, let me see, out of the uh, American Sign Language Services that Paige and I think one other young lady provided, we had $1,960 allocated. We've expended 800. We have a balance of um, 1,160. So we anticipate maybe another $400 will be used between now and the end of this fiscal year.
Okay, great. Um, any questions about that? If not, the report stands.
We do need a motion to uh,
Okay, do we have a motion to approve treasurer's report?
Sure.
Berry got it. Anyone, anyone second?
Who approved it?
Berry deleted.
Very, thank you.
Sorry.
Uh, JW, I think seconded the motion.
Correct.
Um, all, all in favor? Aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carries. Um, we will go ahead and move down into new business. We have two special guests today along with additional guests that Carolyn invited from the Outreach and Education Committee. Uh, so Carolyn, would you like to go ahead and introduce uh, any guests that, I, I see uh, Michael, I believe, has joined us?
Yes, Michael Rodriguez is the um, Director of Production in Student Professional Development at W O U B. Has been there for quite some times and does a tremendous job. I know because I hired him. But anyway, long story short. Uh, we've been looking for additional members for the Communications and the Education Outreach Committee. And Michael has graciously, graciously accepted to join our Communications Committee, which uh, we can certainly use his expertise, as well as the wonderful expertise we have from Claire.
Excellent. Yeah, and, and so, you know, probably ninety percent of our work now gets done in, in the committee structure. So we really appreciate you joining us, Michael. Um, yeah, just from what I hear, you're going to be a great asset to that uh, committee and, and to the work overall. Um, so first, I'd like to go ahead and introduce uh, Mr. Jordy Stringer. Um, he is the Executive Director of the Southeastern Ohio Center for Independent Living, or SOUL. Um, and he's going to talk a little bit about services provided by Centers for Independent Living and the intent to open a satellite office in Athens County. So I will let you take it away, Jordy.
I appreciate that, uh, Davy. Uh, so thank you to you for the opportunity to be able to, to share uh, this evening. Um, this has been something and hello, welcome also and good evening to the rest of the committee members. I appreciate the, the time. I won't take a lot of time. Uh, I know it's uh, after 5:30 and it's about my dinnertime. So I, I certainly won't take much of your time. But again, I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here and share a little bit about SOUL. Um, uh, where our mission is access is opportunity. Um, we, for those who may not know a little bit about what Centers for Independent Living are, I'll tell you just a little bit and then uh, kind of give a little bit more about what our, what our plans are and what our goals are. Uh, Centers for Independent Living are community-based, non-residential centers that are run by people with disabilities. Um, they're cross-disability organizations, which basically means uh, run by a number of individuals with a number of different types of disabilities. And it's also governed by individuals uh, with, with significant disabilities. So uh, are, we provide five core services. We think these there, these are essential to individuals living the most independent life and those services are information and referral services. We recognize the necessity for uh, connecting people to community resources, um, whether they be transportation, uh, education-related, um, uh, daily living skills-related or otherwise. We recognize the importance of that and we recognize also that there, in the disability community, sometimes can be a shortfall in people having access to those resources. So we, we really are, um, that's one of our fundamental things is to ensure that individuals with disabilities are connected to the resources that they need. Um, we also provide daily living skills training services. So if an individual came to us and wanted help looking for a job or was interested in, in learning how to uh, manage a budget or uh, perhaps uh, manage a grocery list or some, some of those types of daily living skills tasks, we would be able to set them up uh, with what's called an independent living plan and, and they would be able to work through uh, the action steps that would allow them to eventually be independent in that. The other uh, services that we believe are essential um, are systemic advocacy. Um, I'm sure that you guys are very aware of how important systemic advocacy is. Um, so, but that's one of our, one of our other critical uh, pieces, one of our critical services. Um, also alongside that is individual advocacy. We find that individuals need as much advocacy as do systems, uh, particularly as it relates to housing, we find is one of the issues um, that um, is one that is really uh, critical for individuals with disabilities um, in that area. So and finally, and these aren't the only services, but these are the five core services that you'll find at any Center for Independent Living. Uh, but finally, uh, our fifth service is transition. And by transition, I mean transition from um, high school to uh, tertiary education or from, or to employment or simply from uh, some uh, residential facility uh, and, and being integrated into the community. There's a lot of, there's a lot when it comes to transition. Um, sometimes I think we think a lot when we say transition about transition age students, particularly those between fourteen and twenty-three, I think twenty-four. Uh, but transition can happen at many stages in life. And so um, we, we take that seriously and we have a person-centered approach. So all of those services are provided based on what the individual's need is. The other thing that I really enjoy about uh, working at a Center for Independent Living and being able to help uh, provide these services in, in the community is that we can be super and extraordinarily um, unique. We can be very flexible. We are not tied to any kind of um, with, with respect to uh, what we can do for an individual. We aren't tied to any kind of uh, system or, or plan of attack. Uh, whatever um, is, whatever the needs of an individual are, those are the things that we are going to assist them with. Um, so those are the, the, the essential things that we do and we serve right now. Pardon me, we serve uh, Fairfield County and Hocking County. The, the numbers in those counties, uh, particularly with people with disabilities, um, are, are pretty small as compared to the grand scheme of things. Between the three counties, uh, Hocking County, Athens County, uh, and Fairfield County, there are only thirty-four thousand people out of two hundred and some odd thousand uh, who actually have disabilities. So we, we are finding that uh, we are serving some folks uh, very well in, in some of these places. And then we're also realizing that we're not reaching um, as many people as we'd like to. And it's been a, a passion of mine and a goal of mine to uh, expand our center's services. Um, and so that um, kind of led to uh, an introduction uh, through Jeremy Morris, who is currently the Executive Director of the Ohio Statewide Independent Living Council, uh, a council which Davy is a member. Um, and so that's how he and I began to talk. And this conversation um, at SOUL has been happening for a little while now in terms of expansion. And we're just finding now that we just think that this is the right time. It's, it's a really unique time that we're in. Uh, we, with the COVID virus and, and all of the things that are happening with that. But we, we've now found that um, especially information and referrals have been something that have picked up. Um, and we were finding that that's a, that's a need um, that i- is there. And, and, and we recognize Athens as being underserved. We've done a, some research to uh, figure out what, what types of services are available there to individuals already with disabilities. Um, so our, our thought uh, is that we would develop a work group, um, myself, uh, Davy, excuse me, our board president, uh, some other folks from the I O Network and hopefully some folks from this uh, group to help kind of bring into fruition um, actually having a, a satellite office um, there in Athens. Um, we had a board meeting yesterday uh, where this was a, a big part of the discussion. Um, Davy, uh, if I may, was elected to serve a term on our board. Uh, also and be a member of this, of this work group, obviously. And so uh, we're really excited about that. And because of that, we just think that the timing is, is, is just great. Um, part of the conversation, I heard somebody when I first came in, asked about any kind of uh, fiscal contributions that might need to be made um, to, to, to us as we try to bring this process forward. Um, right now, we think that we can do it with our current budget. We have a very small budget. But we think if we are looking at um, satellite office, um, maybe one or two days a week, we think that we can provide those services right now with the current budget that we have. The one thing, or one of the things that we might potentially be looking for some assistance with is some space. Uh, somewhere, we have lots of partnerships um, through the I O Network with DD councils. Um, in fact, our Hocking County office um, is housed in the Hocking County DD building. So um, it's, it's, that, that has been a really great partnership. We do pay uh, a nominal amount of rent. Um, and so um, that is something that we certainly um, can and, and are willing to entertain. We have been making some investments technology-wise to ensure that uh, any staff that we have who are working remotely or, or working in satellite offices, um, will be able to have the, the necessary technology. So we're not necessarily looking for that. But the main thing that we would, we would need at this point assistance with besides, you know, the partnerships and all the great things, all the great work that we would be able to do is um, the space. Um, so I'm happy to, I, I kind of went quickly. I, I did, I don't want to take too much time. Uh, but that's pretty much um, where, where we are right now. We've had a couple of meetings, uh, myself and Davy, and then again, our board, uh, our board president and myself and Davy, um, the last probably five or six weeks. And so um, I was invited to, to come here tonight and share this with you all and, and hope uh, that we can kind of field any questions. I actually did a presentation back in April, excuse me, maybe it was May, uh, with um, uh, Tina Williams and the Food for Thought folks. I, I, I know that they are a part of Integrate Athens, I believe. Uh, that's a, one of the, one of the consumer groups um, there. So I know that this conversation has been happening for a little while. And so again, I'm excited and, and pleased to be able to make this happen, even though there's so much uncertainty right now. Um, we, we, one other thing I'll share with you quickly. We also think uh, we uh, are funded by the uh, Department of Health and Human Services and also by the State of Ohio. I, m- most of that money still comes from the federal government. I won't explain all of that because that would lead us down a, a weeded path that I'm not interested in going down right now. But um, we believe that uh, per the terms of our state allowances, that we can actually begin serving uh, Athens County. We think in January of this year, uh, eat with certain of the dollars that we have. So we get part B money and part C money. And so our board has allowed me the uh, the latitude to explore what that might look like, uh, providing, to begin providing information and referral services um, as early as January. So we wanted to start this conversation and kind of get a feel for what the thought is and uh, and, and I don't know what else. Uh, hopefully uh, move forward. But Davy, that's, that's pretty much what I have. I'm happy to uh, answer any questions or share any more details um, with anybody who has any questions.
This is, this is Davy McNally. I think that was a really great and succinct um, you know, introduction to what uh, Centers for Independent Living do and what you do um, in your current service area. I also want to acknowledge uh, some of the people that have worked towards this over the years, including Berry Dilly, who's on our commission. Uh, our Athens City Commission on Disabilities came uh, came to fruition originally because there was a Center for Independent Living in the area. So Berry, JW, um, a few other people got together and start, started this commission, I think fifteen years ago. Is that right?
About.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and yeah, I think we have a lot of, a lot of people that have worked and are very interested. The reason I joined the Board of the Ohio State Independent Living Centers was um, in order to bring SOUL representation to Athens County and to Southeastern, further into Southeastern Ohio and fill in the gaps. So if someone isn't eligible for county board services or, you know, just needs information or referral, they often fall through the cracks. So this is a way that those people can get necessary services to connect to the right, right places and live as independently as possible. So I just want to acknowledge, you know, all the great work that people have done over the years. Um, that being said, we have just a minute or two available for any questions that people have? Um, not, not hearing any questions. Uh, if I'm gonna just kind of get in touch with people uh, to set up a working group. The working group would uh, meet with Jordy and I and the Executive Director of the State Board. Uh, initially, we've uh, felt like meeting once every two months and then working on some of the issues that Jordy talked about. Can I just have like a quick raise of hands of people who might be interested in joining that working group?
Annominate Dr. Smith.
Yeah. All I need is more work.
I, I know.
You, Dr. Smith. Okay, so we, we have a few people that are interested uh, in that. So I'll, I'll get in touch with you afterwards and start forming this uh, group. So thank you very much, Jordy. You're welcome.
Jeremy, can I make a comment? Just um, so I've known Jordy here for, Jesus, over twenty years and
Twenty, twenty-two, twenty-two years this uh, this November.
Yeah. It's just been great to see his maturity and uh, to sit here and just smile with his presentation. Um, you know, he's come a long way, but he's, he, he has worked hard and uh, I was very proud of his, I had him speak in my class, I believe, last year, one of my classes. And I'm just very proud of his development.
Absolutely. This is Davy and I, yeah, I've just been really impressed. Jordy took on the leadership of SOUL. I think uh, about two years ago, one and a half, somewhere around there, where the longtime director retired. Um, yeah, it's just great having, having some real forward-thinking leadership and some willingness to explore the expansion. So thank you. And again, you're welcome to, to stay on and, and join us for the rest of the meeting as well, Jordy.
I may stay for a bit. I'd like to hear the other presentation. This is, I'm sorry, this is Jordy. I'll stay for a bit. I probably will excuse myself um, in, in just a few minutes. But I would like to, you know, at least, at least hear some of the other presentation and, and uh, so again, thank you, everybody, for the time. Um, I'll look forward to working with you all. Um, please, um, once Davy uh, reaches out to you, feel free to, to reach out to me. And I'm, I'm happy to, to talk with, with everybody um, about this. I'm really excited. So, so thanks again.
Thank you very much. Uh, I'd like to go ahead and move on to the next topic of new business, which is Rebecca Miller, who's joining us uh, from Age Friendly Athens. Uh, and if you want to go ahead and kick it off, go, go right ahead, Rebecca.
Okay, thank you. I'm just gonna pull up my screen here real quick. Um, I guess I really, more than anything, want to start by saying thank you so much for having me and just make sure that you are all aware that I am just one person um, out of a, representing kind of a very large group of people who are really um, interested and invested in having this um, move forward. And, and Barry Dilly, who is on, who's on here, she has been a part of this from the very beginning as well. So um, just wanted to first acknowledge that. Thank you for having me and wanting to learn more about it. But I'm just one person. So um, I'm gonna just do a really quick overview of age-friendly um, communities and how we would like to apply that to um, Athens County. Um, we've been working on aging issues in the community since about 2018. And last fall, I had the opportunity to hear a little bit more about age-friendly initiatives um, from across the state, actually. Um, and we had this group of folks that was meeting called Aging in Our Community. Um, and when that group heard about what age-friendly um, was all about, it actually kind of encompassed what we had been thinking about things that we wanted to do in our community. And so there was a lot of enthusiasm about starting to move that process forward. Um, and essentially what age-friendly is, um, it was started by the World Health Organization to help cities prepare for um, rapid population aging. Um, and AARP is actually the United States affiliate for the World Health Organization. Um, and so when we, when we looked at um, what they kind of offered, I mean, it's really an opportunity to make communities more welcoming. Um, and although it's focused on older adults, um, the process allows um, gaps in service, specific projects, um, community needs um, to be identified and goals set to them um, with the, with the idea that it will heighten inclusivity and the quality of life relief for everyone. Um, this is a, this is something that, you know, Athens County could do independently. Um, but we really like the age-friendly model um, for a couple of reasons. Um, we reviewed um, a number of other communities across the state. We reviewed their plans and their community needs assessments and um, and saw that AARP was just so helpful in, with their resources and their structure. Um, and so we thought, you know, we could really benefit from that. And, you know, the fact is, is that there's a lot of legitimacy that comes with being affiliated with the AARP and the World Health Organization with this kind of designation, which we thought was really um, very cool also. So here's just a little bit about how the process goes. It's actually a five-year process. Um, that although we have started, we are getting ready to officially kick off with the submission of an application to the AARP. Um, we were really fortunate that the first step is to identify like an advisory committee um, to kind of pu- push this effort forward. And we already had that from the Aging in Our Community initiative. Um, and so although we mark that as kind of completed, we of course are still looking to build our membership in that. Um, the next thing will be to conduct a community needs assessment and this will take about two years. Um, we will use a variety of methods to do that, which certainly some, will be somewhat impacted by COVID. Um, but we're going to continue to carry on. Um, and then of course, we will develop um, an action plan and evaluation plan. That'll be our goals, um, the things that we identify as a community that we would like to improve upon. And then we'll spend the next three years implementing that. And then from there on out, of course, um, you know, evaluate, um, further develop, establish best practice, that kind of thing. Um, so we're just now at the beginning. We're going to be um, filing our application. Um, I think actually like this week. Um, it's, it's ready, ready to go and we're ready to go. Um, so the way that the AARP actually um, they, the way that they work their community development um, through the age-friendly process is actually through um, eight pre-identified domains of livability, which are outdoor spaces and public places, transportation, housing, social participation, respect and social inclusion, work and civic engagement, communication and information, and community and health services. However, given that sustainability has been such a high priority for uh, the Athens community for so long, we added a ninth domain um, of sustainability. These will, these domains are kind of like, we're, we're viewing them as kind of like subcommittees. And so each one of these subcommittees will be chaired by um, kind of like a professional or an expert in that field, as well as um, co-led by an older adult community member, um, which I did not come up with this term, but I really like it. And I think Berry does too, experienced experts. Um, and so each of these domains will be co-chaired um, by, again, specialists as well as our experienced experts as well. Um, so with these groups will work towards um, eliciting community input, establishing goals. And then those goals will be put into the larger plan that we submit to the AARP. Um, one thing that I'm really proud of and that AARP has told us that we have already done a really good job at is we have well over forty um, community partners at this point. Um, this is just a sampling of some of the partners that we have. It certainly doesn't, it's not inclusive of all the individual um, experienced experts that we're working with or, or, or in students and that kind of thing. But um, we're really proud of, of the partnerships that we've built already. Like I said, the next steps are to um, we're in the process of establishing a survey that will go out to the community. Um, we're drawing upon other community surveys um, that have been done locally, as well as resources that AARP has. Um, we will then move towards trying to do some community meetings um, where we elicit ideas for what's really needed. Um, I think what's really important in this is that although we really need older adult community members to provide input on this, we really need, we really want everyone's input. Um, we certainly think a lot about people who want to stay here long-term, who maybe aren't categorized in an older adult, like sixty-five and over necessarily, but want to stay here long-term. We really need that input as well. So we can make a plan that's really comprehensive and as inclusive as possible to everyone. Um, so we really are in need of more community input and participation. Um, like any brand-new um, community initiative, we just established a Facebook page. Uh, we don't have a website or anything like that yet, but we do have a Facebook page. And that really doesn't even have that much information on it yet, but we would love for you to follow us on there. And of course, if you're interested in getting involved, my contact information is on there too. So I know that was a very brief overview, but I'd be, I'd be happy to ask any, or excuse me, answer any questions that anyone might have, to the best of my ability, anyway.
Uh, this is JW. Uh, Rebecca, what does respect, I think you said respect and sociability, I believe?
Um, respect and um, respect and social inclusion.
Yeah, what is, uh, so yeah, I think I know what social inclusion, what, what, what's at the heart of the respect part?
Well, I mean, I think that, I mean, there is an AARP definition and I'd be happy to send you a link and I'd be happy to send you a link to where you can kind of see all of the, what, what AARP kind of determines to that. However, it really can be defined, it should be defined by our community. And actually, the person who's, one of the, one of the co-chairs of that group is Tina Wilson from, um, Integrate Athens, and really excited that she wanted to, uh, chair that, um, subcommittee. Um, she's a perfect person for it and has already brought on some, some good people. So I think it's just making sure that people feel respected in their communities, making sure, um, all, there's representation of all people who live in the community. That's the way I view it, and AARP, I think, is along the same lines, maybe stated a little different, but that's what we're looking at.
This is Carolyn. Uh, JW, I, and Rebecca, I served on that committee with Tina. We had our first meeting, uh, last week, and that's the one thing that we're doing, trying to figure out the mission statement, and what it is we're supposed to be doing was respect and inclusion.
I forgot, Ms. Carolyn's gonna be on that committee. So we've got so much great representation on here already.
I'm wanting to, um.
I have a question then, uh, as well.
Let's let Rose go first, and then Cheryl has a question.
Okay, can we maybe raise hands? Does anyone mind if we do that? Because I keep trying to, to make a comment, but then other people are talking, and it's difficult to get in. So it's, it's really hard. So then maybe for full inclusion and participation?
Yeah, absolutely. So, uh, let's go ahead and go to.
Okay, so the po- the PowerPoint there, there was an email, sorry, my, this is the interpreter. My computer is freezing, so Cheryl's a little bit behind. There's a little bit of a lag, too.
Okay, uh, so let's go ahead and, uh, Cheryl's question first.
So in the PowerPoint, would you mind sending out the PowerPoint, Rebecca?
Oh, absolutely.
Great, and, um, thank you. This is Davey.
Get Rose's question.
Yeah, let's go ahead and go over to Rose, I believe, Rose had a question as well. Go ahead, Rose.
Okay, what I wanted to ask is, I belong to a group called the Athens Village, and I wondered if you guys had contacted them. It's a group of about a hundred-plus people, and what we have in common is we're all over the age of sixty. Now, it's a paid membership, so people, you know, I don't know if they'd be interested in that, in this, but maybe, but, um, they're all very actively involved with the community and with each other to make, be able to live in their own homes. That, that's the primary thing is for the rest of your life, to live at home rather than be in a, a different environment. And so have you guys ever contacted the Athens Village?
Yeah, actually, the Athens Village has been at the table right from the beginning, um, and really supportive of.
I didn't see the list, I didn't see the list, so, you know, they weren't on the list, so, good, I'm glad.
Yeah, yeah, I, if that, if I didn't include them on that list, that was a major oversight on my part, because they're a main partner, so I apologize. I'll make that change before I send the PowerPoint.
This, this is Davey, that's a great idea. Uh, so we're, we're running a little short on time, but, uh, one, one thing that Rebecca and I have talked about is, as our, uh, as, uh, Age Friendly Athens and the committees of the Athens City Commission on Disabilities start overlapping a little bit, we talked about, uh, possibly holding some joint meetings, uh, together. And I think that's something, so i- if you're doing, you know, advocacy work, there is, uh, a very similar subcommittee for, for Age Friendly Athens. So I think what we might do is work on the buil- buildings and outside spaces with the Accessibility Committee. And I encourage, you know, that to happen within the committee structure. So, yeah, thank you, thank you very much, Rebecca, for joining us today and sharing about Age Friendly Athens.
Thanks for having me. I'm gonna, I'm gonna stay for the rest of the meeting, if that's okay with you.
Absolutely, thank you. Uh, and I'd like to go ahead and bounce down to, uh, the bylaws. Do you'd like to take over, Carolyn?
Yes, the bylaws state that you must have them at least thirty days in advance when changes are made, in order that we might make, adopt, you know, adopt any changes. So I would just like to make, like to make a motion unless there are any objections to what you received and any other additions or deletions, uh, that we accept, adopt the bylaws as they are.
I second.
I think we had a motion from Rose. Do we have a second?
Yeah, a motion from Dr. Lewis, and then Rose seconded.
Okay, gotcha.
No, I, I seconded, I was the second.
Okay, uh, all, all in favor of adopting the bylaws as written, raise your hands and say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Well, that was quick, thank you, Carolyn. Uh, we're, we're gonna bounce down to the, that concludes old business. We'll move down to committee reports now. Um, the executive team, what we mostly talked about was just the upcoming speakers, um, and the bylaws, which we've already talked about. Um, we talked a little bit about the types of committee work that were being done. Um, all the fabulous work with, which the committees can report on. Um, I am, I have scheduled a time for October fourteenth to speak with, uh, Dr. Carrie Bush of Ohio University to continue to see where we can collaborate between the city and OU. Um, I'm working on a voting initiative letter to the editor, and I sent a letter, uh, thanking Mayor Patterson, uh, for the press conference time and proclamation on behalf of us all. Um, and Noah is moving today and tomorrow, so he was eager to join us. He's moving back into his home, it's all newly remodeled. He's really excited about that. And also Diane retired a couple of weeks ago, and, uh, that's why Carolyn is fulfilling as our, um, secretary tonight, as well as treasurer, uh, but she put in her thirty years at OU and is really enjoying her retirement, going kayaking a lot. Uh, and spending a lot of time outside, so she's traveling this week, I think camping maybe. Um, so, yeah, we just really appreciate her and want to wish her well in her retirement. Um, and now we can go ahead and, anything else in executive that we should mention? Carolyn?
I don't think so, Davey. I think you covered it.
Okay, great. Um, so we're gonna go ahead and move down to the Accessibility Committee Report. And since Noah is not here today, and Diane is not here today, I guess I have to do this one as well. Uh, we had just, just a great meeting, uh, last Thursday. Uh, we met with, uh, people from the Affordable Housing Commission, um, and with Joe McCabe and Frank Legoda, I think his name was, with Wada Cooper. Uh, they are in the process of, uh, building a fifty-one-unit site and a fifty-six-unit site off of six eighty-two and Lurig Road, kind of across from University Estates in Athens. Um, it's going to be all universal design-based, which is amazing. That's something we've been pushing with the, with the city for a while. Um, there'll be twelve completely ADA-accessible units, uh, on the first floor, including four sensory units for people who have, um, you know, who are maybe on the autism spectrum, also people who are experienced, who are deaf and hard of hearing, uh, or also have any kind of visual impairment. So there, there are already some, some considerations of that. The R Committee, uh, really went through the floor plans with them and made some additional, recommendations as well. So i- it's, the affordability is great as well, so it's not designed specifically to be HUD-based, but I think if you, I think some of the, the space can be, you can probably use a voucher, like a HUD voucher for it, but it's designed for those people that are at thirty percent to eighty percent of the median income of Athens County. So that's, you know, anywhere from fourteen to thirty-nine thousand dollars for a single person, or for a family of three or four, twenty-one thousand to fifty-six thousand. So it really fills in some of those housing gaps in our community. Um, and the timeline is to break ground for construction and time to start leasing in the summer of twenty-twenty-two. Um, so they met with us in order to just get feedback, which we gave a lot of feedback and thanks to everyone who was involved in that. Um, Noah, Noah and Diane and e- every, everyone was, and Tiffany at OU, uh, all gave really tremendous feedback. Um, using tax credits in order to make this happen. Uh, Paul Logue, uh, was, is one of the co-chairs. Uh, so he joined us for that as well and can continue to, to work with us. Um, and you'll find some really great detailed notes that Diane put together in, in the packet, so I don't want to go too, too far into this, uh, but please take a look over that. It's, it's really great. We tabled our discussion of the Washington State Street, uh, streetscaping projects, because we just didn't have enough time. Uh, and then we also put together the city pool accessibility recommendations. So Noah and Diane and I and Carolyn, uh, all went through and have looked at the pool over the last year. So, so we compiled those notes and sent them, uh, to the city for, for inclusion. And Mayor Patterson did meet us there for lunch one day, and we went through and talked about, you know, just adding some features to make access, uh, a little bit better. But generally, they did, they did, you know, a really good job on it. I know people, people did a lot of work on that, so thank you. Um, any questions about that before we move on? All right. Let's go ahead and move on to the Communications Committee, Claire.
Hi, this is Davey. Uh, this is Claire, and, um, we had a very productive meeting last week. Um, it was me, Rose, Arian, um, and Dr. Lewis. And, um, yeah, it's, we're, we're pretty much, um, focused on promoting the Athena Award on our Facebook page, as well as getting submissions for the new Athena Award Two, which, um, we'll need, uh, for the next, I think, six years. Um, so it's our Calling All Artists flyer, and, um, as far as I know, we haven't had any submissions yet, which is, um, a little concerning, but I mean, we'll kind of ramp up, um, promotion of that after, um, this, uh, this award season is done. Um, on the Facebook page, I tagged probably like seven or eight local arts organizations, and it reached about four hundred people. So I'm hoping that there's someone that, you know, sees it and is really inspired by it. Um, and, you know, we have some, uh, content ideas, um, to help promote, you know, this need if, um, if we still don't get any submissions. Um, but, but yeah, so there's that, and, you know, just encouraging people to submit their, um, nominations for the Athena Award by the October first deadline, and then also the, uh, monthly letters and columns. Um, cause, I'm sorry, I'm hearing some feedback. I'm wondering if someone, um, can mute their mic. I'm, sorry, thank, I, okay, I think that did it. It was just, um, it's like, wow, I can hear myself.
I think Rose is, though, not, is not muted. I think it's coming from Rose.
Okay. Yeah, I'm still here, yeah. Yeah, it's almost like a background, like, radio or something. Um, so maybe it's not my voice, but yeah, it sounds like, um.
Yeah. Ryan, would you mind muting Rose's, uh, microphone for us? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And, um, and yeah, then, um, our monthly letters and columns, um, the news cycle has been out of control, as we all know. And so, um, I think our, our editors at our local papers are really swamped. So, um, I, I check, um, every so often to, you know, make sure that something gets published, um, a few times a week, but, um, we haven't really had that much luck. Um, and I'd hate for Dr. Lewis to have to keep sending reminders. So we are, um, developing a workaround where, um, it's a, it's not necessarily a website, um, or one of those, like, dated blog spots, but it is a quote-unquote blog, um, where, um, I'm sure, you know, you may have heard of medium.com. Um, it has a really clean interface and, um, it's very professional-looking, and, um, we're just gonna start posting some updates on there. Um, some, some letters, some columns, and then any other features that we want, whether it's, you know, someone on a committee, someone within the community, um, one of the people on the commission. Um, so, but yeah, but just remember to, uh, to like and share our posts as much as possible. Um, our, we, we have been getting a lot of engagement, which is great, but, um, that's all I have.
Uh, thank you very much, Claire, I appreciate that. And, uh, have you, have you been getting a lot of submissions for, for the Athena Award nominations?
Uh, yes, I believe we have, um.
I'm, we're still getting background from, from Rose's computer. I don't understand, because she muted.
Right.
That's very strange. Everybody's muted, but I'm, I'm hearing that.
I don't think that's one, any one person, so.
He says it's coming up on Rose's thing for some reason. Well, anyways, let's go ahead and move on to education. Uh, Carolyn and Barry?
Hello? Oh, hello?
Oh, oh, Barry's still muted, so.
Okay.
Am I muted now?
There you go, yeah.
All right. Um, we're, from now on until October, our meeting, we have to look at the various folks that have been nominated and select folks. So it's, that's in the process. Um, and then next meeting of this group, we'll have to, um, finalize the choices and the, this year's, um, recipient. So that's where we are with that. And Claire already talked about the Athena Award, and hopefully we will get some submissions. Um, I wanted to find out, Claire, from you, if there was a way, or maybe there was organizations that we could present, you know, I don't know, you know, sort of like JB, Doug W., that's doing with the civic organizations. But I don't know whether they're meeting or anything, but something like that.
That's a really good idea, and, um, yeah, I will definitely touch base, um, via email, because we have some other things we need to talk about.
Yeah, yes. Carolyn, anything else?
I'll mute myself. I think you've covered it, thank you.
Okay.
I just wanted to say I had a great meeting with the, this is JW. I had a great meeting with the Lions Club last night. Yes, they met at IHOP, which is kind of interesting. Uh, I didn't know IHOP had a nice meeting room. It's kind of small, but it's pretty nice. Got a great meeting with them, and so what's so ironic about that is I have always wanted to join that group. They, they've done, they do a lot of work for the blind, visually impaired, so I made them a deal last night that if I join their group, somebody should join one of our committees. So I, I think it's gonna be great. I handed out the envelope that Claire graciously brought by my house, interrupting my great glass of wine, but that's okay. And I, um, had a great time with them. They asked great questions, really good questions. So I am, you know, I am gonna join that group, and hopefully we'll hear from them in terms of joining our committees, too.
That's great. Thanks, this is Davey. Thanks for that update, JW, and thanks for your community outreach. I hear a lot of good.
I'm honored to do it.
Yeah, uh, let's go and move down to advocacy. I, I know we've kind of postponed for the last couple of months. Uh, and, uh, again, we just, you know, really appreciate, appreciate you, Sly, and.
Good to have you back.
Ashley?
Uh, am I unmuted? Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Um, I am happy to be back. I'm happy to see your faces, and I want to, you know, thank you for all the support, letters, emails, phone calls, text messages, and, and everything. So it's, it's meant the world to me. Advocacy, advocacy group, we hit a little bit of, and I'll be very succinct. We've been, we hit a little roadblock, because prior to my leaving, um, we hit a little roadblock, because prior to my leaving, there was some, it wasn't miscommunication, but we didn't set in stone our meeting schedule and meeting time with both the city and our members, and so that kind of delayed this month's meeting. But I was able to work with Patricia to make sure that we have our meetings on time and where they're going to be located, when and where. So we're going to resume our monthly meetings starting next month. Our last meeting, we did give ourselves homework in terms of looking at best practices of other advocacy groups, both in regional cities of Cleveland, Columbus, and in Ohio, but also nationally as well. So we can make sure that we're staying true to our goals and our mission, but also picking up best practices. And so during our next meeting, that is what we'll discuss, is best practices, but also creating some targets and some goals for our advocacy committee for this coming year.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, and I'm really, yeah, I think with your leadership and with your team that you have, it's going to really do a lot for advocacy in our community. So thank you, Sly, this is Davey. And I'd like to go ahead, if you want to.
Davey, this is Carolyn, I have a question for Sly. What are your meeting, your regular monthly meeting days?
So right now, we're scheduled, thank you for that question, Dr. Lewis. Right now, we're scheduled for Monday afternoon at 5:00 PM. There was a couple of different options, but Monday was the best option for us to have, so we kept the time slot, and so it can be recorded and distributed out as well.
So on the, what, the second, what's the third Mondays, or?
The first Monday of the month.
First Monday, oh, I got you, so you started in October.
Yeah, so our next meeting will be October 5th.
Okay, thank you.
This is Davey, thanks for that update. That was going to be my next question. Yeah, I have it on the agenda incorrectly, so that'll be corrected in the minutes. And do we have any, we do have a hard stop time at 6:30. Do we have any announcements in the next couple of minutes?
So I'm gonna, it's not so much of an announcement, this is JW, but I shared a PDF of some chapters that I use in my class with a colleague of mine, and she sent back a website, I believe it's through Yale or Harvard, where you can go and take this implicit bias test, and it includes disabled. Would the group be interested in me forwarding that on to you? It looks interesting.
This is Davey, yes, please do. I think we all enjoy getting that information. If you want to.
All right, I'll have sent it to Diane and have her forward it on to you. It looks like a very interesting website.
Yes, this is Davey, that sounds great. I think it's the Harvard implicit bias. And yeah, it's something that I've definitely done, and it's interesting to get results from that to realize your own biases. And do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, this is Arianne.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you all very much, and I will see everyone else on various committees and also during the commission next month. Thank you all very much for all that you do and all the work you're putting down. And yeah, I really appreciate it, we'll stay in touch.
Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you.